We just see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Robins?
Here.
Mr. Grazer?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
All right. First item on them. Your agenda is proven. Twenty-five, twenty-six, good.
Um, we've got your notebooks in front of you and our little cheat sheet that we call it to go over certain items, but before we do that, I want to say thank you to Tina. Um, Tina works so hard all the time, but you know, she has put in so much time and effort on this budget and weekends and nights and she does it very diligently and doesn't gripe or complain and we, she's the only person we just could not do it without, so Tina.
But thank you also, like you put in tons of hours also.
We, we make a great team. We make a great team. And so in this budget, this is a balanced budget. We're not asking the county for anything, so we are balanced. This budget does include a $2,000 bonus for all certified employees and the amount of $402,000. If you remember, this is coming from the state. Uh, we've had our first little, they call it an audit of the employees. Uh, they're do, they pulled it April fifteenth, they'll pull another one May fifteenth and another one on June fifteenth. Um, in the initial poll, um, a few employees were missing, um, Leon went in compasses, which is where our teachers, teachers are pulled for evaluation purposes. So that money will be coming from the state in July. However, we will probably not be able to give it out until September or October because until we have a full budget approval by the state, we can't, we can't write checks and allocate money. So, um, we feel like, um, majority of our employees will be funded from the state. And they're also picking up the fixed cost as well, so.
Does that cover everybody?
No. No, there's like thirty some, I think it was thirty-one or thirty-two employees that it did not cover because it only enclover, it only covers teachers that have students. Teach at least fifty percent of their instructional time is with students and, um, those that are on more than a hundred and twenty day contracts. So it didn't cover anyone that was on a hundred day contract, did not cover anybody on a hundred and twenty day contract. There's not really a lot of those and it didn't cover any administrators. And you know, the board had said you would pick up what was not covered. So we've got that in there. Um, we do have in there to switch from the alternative salary schedule to years of experience and the $2,000 pay increase, which will help us get up to Governor Lee's expectation of $50,000 in two years. The total for that with the pay increase and the switch to years bonus, you can see is eleven, eleven point five million because the majority of our budget is salary. Uh, this does not, in that number, it's not include the $402,000 for bonus because the majority of that we will get back from the state. Uh, we do have in this balance budget, a dollar fifty per hour increase for non-certified employees in the amount of approximately $365,542. Uh, transition of bus drivers to a yearly salary schedule, which y'all requested in the amount of $110,486. We have in there a $500 bonus for the non-certified employees in the amount of, um, approximately $83,750. The Connections Academy payment, remember this is a flow-through in the amount of $22,258,335. And this is with the April estimate. Usually by the May estimate from TISA is pretty much what it's going to be in June and July. We do not get a final TISA estimate until July. But in the past with BEP, in the past few years with TISA, what we get in May is what we have in July. Uh, we did pick up the approximate four percent health insurance increase for all general purpose employees. Again, remember this is GP budget, this is your al's budget. This does not include what it costs for, for the federals. Uh, we did pick that up for a half a year. As far as revenue coming in, this budget does include TISA funds in the amount of $43,407,670.90. Again, this is not what the final might be when we get that in July. If anything, it'll be a little bit more, it wouldn't be less. Uh, three point five percent, remember we get to keep three point five percent of Connections Academy revenue and there's the amount for it, $867,207.88. And it also includes the increase in local sales tax and property tax collections.
And I ask that we not discuss those two items yet because I gave Tina numbers based on some projections I have that the Budget Committee won't see that data till next week.
This does include, uh, we do not have to cut any positions. Uh, this does include adding positions that you all had, had said that we could. A public relations employee, a social worker, again, that will be funded through a grant, a security position and the meat processing teacher, which we feel like will, can be funded through the ISM grant as well for at least one year.
Security position is?
Has an additional security guard.
Is that security or is that not through sheriff's department?
No.
Just security?
Just security. It'll be our employee.
Okay.
And, uh, that's just some highlights of, of the budget. So Tina, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, do you want? Um, we can go line by line, we can go section by section. I know y'all had a chance to look over the GP one. Um, if there's specific questions, however y'all want us to handle it.
And if, if it's okay, and I have forgot to do this, is there anything you want to hear from the federal folks as far as their budget since this is all GP?
I know we've talked about your managers, but at some point we're going to have to help you with your managers.
I mean, maybe, not, not this year, but maybe later.
How did the, the dollar fifty, you want to tell him how that impacted your hour?
Um, it's a $54,000 increase in salary plus fixed cost. And then of course I had to increase food supplies and all that because food's going up everywhere. Um, so it's overall increase in my budget of $122,000. And if you look at the first section of your notebook, it has, um, general purpose in column two, federal projects in column three, central cafeteria in column four and Head Start over in column eight. And then behind the green paper, you'll see the roll-up of the federal projects. It'll, it'll show you the Title I, IDA, IDA preschool, Title I consolidated, Title II, Title V neglected, Title IV, AM Perkins. So everything that's in the second section rolls up to category three on your initial roll-up section.
Thank you.
No, I, Head Start will be okay this year, but you know, we're kind of flat funded. They're not giving that COLA increase, so in subsequent years going forward, it may, may need to look at that a little bit.
So we're going to have to step up and take care of it if others have issues?
Hopefully not, it's more the pre-K side than, because I think Heads are okay, but it's more the pre-K side that would be, you know, they keep rolling out more expectations and requirements with the Head Start performance standards. So if they don't give those COLA increases in years to come, in order to meet those, we may have to revisit. It's because GP already picks up some of the extra with pre-K as it's coming.
And pre-K has been flat funded for several years.
Yeah, and they, they don't, they provide enough basically for the teacher and assistant, that's pretty much it.
I think we're pretty good, I mean, we're good for next year.
It's going to be the year after that when?
Yeah, we, we keep adding assistance because we have so many kids with special needs, uh, you know, uh, over the top needs, so adding the one-on-ones is taking a chunk of our.
Perfect, ten letters.
No.
You said assistance, not brought something else to it?
Well, we made the titles work, but we literally, I did not put the $500 bonus, so we will not be, I mean, like that's going to be out. I, I transferred some money from other titles to title one, different positions. I took out the money that I reserve in case that there's a cut and we literally have $1,500 to split between schools for supplies and materials. In, in my time of doing this, it has never been this tight, never. Just the medical insurance, not all of the 21 employees that I have have medical insurance, but just that cost alone was $151,000 that you're spending, I have $904,000 total.
Not all of them have, but?
No.
Then I'll, I'll carry it because somebody else has it.
If they, if they did, I mean, there would be no choice whatsoever.
And then see the caveat with that is they could pick it up in January. If they wanted to during COVID.
If they wouldn't have covered.
If they wanted to pick it up.
And it's actually a good thing that we projected high, like towards the eight percent.
Based on what they told us.
Because we were at a finance meeting on Tuesday and Wednesday and the state was apologizing because there, there's going to be the increase. So at least we took initiative and covered.
And the increase, because I was there during CPE credit, but the increase is more on the prescription drug side. That's where the problem is, it's the volatility of it. And case in point, they talked a lot about the, the Ozempics, the Wegovy's, that GLP type drug and the fact that it's astronomical of what it costs. I mean, case in point, I'm on Ozempic to control blood sugar, not to lose weight. I've lost weight because of it, but that prescription loan is $1,200 a month that they're paying. I pay $25 of it. And they're, they have seen just astronomical increases with the drugs. And they're, you know, they're concerned, a lot of our medications are made overseas and they're really concerned that we're going to start seeing shortages of medications in the, in the drug supply lines and much of other stuff if we're not careful. But that's, that's where the cost is at, it's not on the medical side, it's actually on the prescription side is where a lot of this cost is coming from and these increases are coming from.
So we just wanted to, you know, head out and just share where they looked as far as federal, what it looked for them, not only this year, but in the years to come, so y'all could sort of have a picture of that. Did you have a question about Perkins?
Well, it was.
When I can try to.
I know.
And Harvey said if we had questions to call?
Just call it, I, I know some of the, some of the departments over there need some extra help. You know, like some shop classes need an extra assistant at times because of their split, particularly the building trade.
The building trades is split.
Yeah, they need a, need another assistant. I didn't know where they worked that, if you look at it.
I can find out.
See if, see if we could get another one over there somewhere.
Okay.
Let's start and talk about it.
All right, I might ask a question. Give me the breakdown of how many months each of these new positions are employed. I'm assuming the social worker probably takes ten more positions.
The public relations employee, we had looked at eleven months.
Eleven months.
Social worker, ten months.
Government security.
Or how many months had you?
I'd actually budgeted it for twelve, but I mean.
Original number.
Because Grant may be picking that up.
Yeah, that will come out.
So potentially could be twelve more positions, okay?
Yes.
The social worker.
So if the grant picks it up.
I had originally wrote it for a year and a half, but we're already, like I, and I followed up with them uh, in the last week and I asked them, okay, like, are we going to get this money or we not? And she said that she felt like that we would.
This is through?
This is through Project Serve. This is to reimburse us for childcare for the flood, like what we paid so that we can provide that to parents. It would pay for this position, but, so I had originally wrote that because I thought that we would get the money by January, February and we still have it. So there is quite, I mean, we're going to have a little bit of extra money there because we've not been able to deal with the position. But they will have to approve how we allocate it if we change.
Um, security position, eleven months and meat processing, twelve months.
No, meat processing, it's going to come through, do you get it?
It'll be through ISM, yeah, but we still have to approve the position. But as far as our budget, your al's budget, it will not be.
And the agreement was the system paid for the teacher. The county will have to pick up, pay for the, the assistant.
Okay.
So it's going to be, it'll be a split combination. County employee will be the assistant, potential lead school system employee.
Okay. And how, how the building?
It's anyway. They're projecting, what did Tom say today during that bid opening before the bid opening?
I know it's not, it's not moving as quickly as Harvey would like.
They're pretty well, I think we're looking at second semester, structural one.
Yeah, if that, we'll, we'll be lucky if we can do that.
Well.
But definitely next school year, but hopefully by Christmas.
You ought to actually work for the governor, we've been building a building for three years.
Still don't have it.
Feel like it. So how many positions, nothing trading around?
Nope.
We, we, we would like to, if possible, and this is already in the budget, we did have a K-two academic coach. Um, we would like to look at, the numbers at Doe have went up over the past few years. Um, from like 150 to now, we're at almost 240 students. Uh, we would like to look at maybe in the possibility of adding an assistant principal to that school. Just for all the evaluations, the discipline, you know, it takes a lot, uh, to run a school. But at school, when you get over 240, 250, it's hard for one person.
I think that would be fantastic.
And we already have a, a K-two academic coach in the position. Angie said she was willing that, there's no one in that position. We feel like this is a greater.
What was that K your coach at?
But they were housed at Mountain City, but they were for everyone, yeah.
So you're just flip-flopping.
We're just flip-flopping, um, it would be, the, the principal at Doe is 11 months and so we would make this position a ten month position, but it is, it is needed.
We have not had that K-two position since we came back in November because the teacher that fifth, that was fifth grade at Mountain City, um, left and we didn't have an applicant and so I didn't have a choice except to move that coach into that teaching position for the remainder of this year. So we had it for, from starting school till September.
Yeah.
So it's a great wish, but it's, you know, that's a great.
Assistant principal is of a better need. And I know, um, as far as like why is the enrollment increase at Doe?
Yeah.
Um, it's just people moving in and I think they're moving into that area. They're, they're one of the few schools where enrollment has increased. Um, we did get some kids from Little Milligan.
I think the bus routes.
The bus routes and the zoning, I think it have changed some of that.
So is that something you can put in place for next year?
If you all would allow us.
I mean, if you lose, if you lost kids somewhere else and they went there or is it just, just the increase?
I think it's just an increase there. I mean, we do have, uh, of the sh, the kids from Shady, some of them, the majority of them do go to Mountain City, but it's been closed for a few years. Um, the bus that travels goes to, to Doe, I don't know, how many kids are on that bus, darling?
Which one?
From Shady to Doe?
Uh, on a good day, we'll say probably eight or 10 on a good day.
I was going to say 10, yeah.
Yeah, so, but it, it is, it is a need.
Agreed.
Any questions, any, how you want us, would you like for us to, yeah, whatever this, any questions you have?
I didn't realize the band concert was at 6:30 and I know that some of y'all wanted to go, so we can just go through each section, say, you know, this or you tell us.
Um, y'all?
I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with this, so, I mean, I understand it.
I'm familiar with it because I remember when you walked me through it, how it all worked. So I was up until 1:30, we.
Sorry.
No, 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 no.
And I sent you the notes also, I sent you the, the notes.
And it was huge as far as being able to understand where everything was, so no, I'm, I'm familiar with it.
And I mean, and that's like, if you want to know, blimry property tax and sales tax increases, give those to you, it just, I don't, I don't, don't feel it's appropriate for us to sit here and talk about it publicly when the actual Budget Committee themselves haven't seen those numbers yet.
I agree.
So can I email that?
Yeah, you can email that, I mean, because both of the numbers are up, I mean, which is a good thing.
Well, gentlemen, it's.
Well, and before we get into too much more, I, I, based on what we sort of learned from the fiscal side of how this certified bonus is going to flow, we probably need to make sure that we do some clarification of what our intent is to where administration understands what we're asking. You know, the majority of these positions are going to be funded and they're funded statutorily based on the 24, 25 school year that we're in. So if we have folks that terminate, folks that do not come back, folks that retire, we're still going to have to pay those folks out once we receive this money sometime after 20, after July. And then pick up and cover the positions that it will not fund, which are basically administrative positions, your hundred, your hundred, your 120 day contract positions, anything, anybody who is less than at least 120.
And you're talking about the bonus?
The bonus, the big, the certified bonus.
Okay.
To where we fund everything and then, and I think to help with morale purposes, and I want your guys' opinion about this, with the fact that we're probably not going to pay this out probably till September. September, October will be the earliest that we can potentially look at doing this just based on what we have to go through to get the school year started and the, the animal, the bear that the payroll becomes in August. But I think to help with morale, if even, let's say you hiring in a new teacher directly out of college, she didn't, they didn't work anywhere the year before, we still locally fund that $2,000 bonus to them. It helps with morale and it also would help potentially with retention, especially with teaching positions. What's your guys' thoughts about that?
Well, what, what are the, did you all feel that are here?
Well, they're, they're receiving it too.
And if someone transfers in from say Carter County or whatever.
See, Carter County is responsible for.
They're already going to get it.
Yeah, they're already, already going to get it. And then the non-certified bonus, that one's purely local or support bonus, let me use the right phrasing. And I think that one's based on what the employment status is at the time that we establish, the time that we're going to pay the bonus. So basically we won't look at 24, 25 for them, we'll look at 25, 26. Does that make sense? Teachers, we have no choice, we have to look at 24, 25 because that's what the state statute says. Locally, we do what we want to, but basically you have to be employed for the 25th to 26th school year and be on active payroll at that time for, to be able to receive that $500 bonus. Because if not, it's going to be a nightmare trying to keep.
No, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, we've got it.
I mean, it's, it's pretty well in here.
But if they've already received it in another district, I don't think we should double up.
No, 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 no.
He's, I think he's saying brand new, just out of college, has never worked before.
Like for instance, if we have a teacher who worked in Carter County last year as a, as a teacher and comes to Johnson County, Carter County receives that money and it's Carter County's responsibility to pay the bonus to them. Which the timing may be different because everybody's going to do this differently. Now, that was one of the questions that I asked.
I think some systems are actually paying it out this fiscal year using their budget, but we could not, we could not do that.
And I think I'm fine with that, as far as, because you're right, from a morale perspective, you have somebody who's starting and everyone who's around them is getting $2,000 and then they're sitting there and they're not, it puts a bad taste in their mouth.
Well, and we also need to make sure that, that teachers that are, that transfer need to understand, we're not going to pay, your, your exiting system will pay that. It's kind, you know, if, if it could have been done this year and the state could have gave us the money this year, it would have made it a lot easier, but it's just not going to work.
Yeah, almost like a sum up, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so one, one other question, like our 120 day employees, like they're not included. So do we give them a portion or how do you, what do you all feel about that?
I think we, I think we locally will give the bonus as we promoted it before having one. So if they're a hundred day contracted, 50%, if they're 120, 60% of that $2,000. Because I mean, we're funding it local anyway.
Are y'all okay with that?
If it does for, I mean, we hit the policy, whatever we did for.
And, and you know, they do spend, the ones that are 100 days and 120 days, they do spend more than 50% of their time in direct instruction with, with students.
Yeah.
But by the other set of the rules, it says you have to be employed more than 120 days.
And be evaluated.
And be evaluated and now the, the 120 day contract people that are interventionist, they are, but they still not meet the qualifications based on what the state guidelines.
You know, it, it sort of, it sounded real good on paper what they were doing, but then when you look at all of the exclusions that are in it.
It's the red tape on the ball.
Yeah.
And what you, what you went through the red tape?
He just wanted vouchers.
That is basically it. That, that is how he's sweetened up on to get vouchers.
He spent eight years in there, he's valid.
And I'm just going to tell you, we just, we don't know from a state standpoint how detrimental it's going to be four or five, six years down the road.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and will have some impact here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be every, all 95 school districts across the state are going to deal with this and deal with the impact of vouchers.
But we don't want the next governor to do that.
That's true, I mean, we don't know what the next governor's going to do.
Okay, so we got the budget, we got it set, it's laying here in front of us. Losing no employees, gaining three, not splitting any?
Nope, no.
No grades?
Not at Laurel, not the ones that, just the ones, maybe will there be any split at Laurel?
It's a pre-KK.
It's a pre-KK.
Pre-KK, no third, no nothing, okay. Okay.
You mentioned Laurel and it made me think. Where do we stand with some of the capital projects, I think we need to start talking about, AKA windows at Run Creek, for instance.
That is something to me that we need to look into, is the windows at Run Creek. I know I've talked to Kevin about that.
Well, I thought we had looked at her work.
We are work, I have Leon working on that.
Okay.
To try to get out a bid to see what it would cost to replace the windows at Run Creek. Because we have something that are just falling, I mean.
That's one of the things when they.
It's just the way it was built.
When they built the building, that's one of the things that they, they cheat out on.
So Leon is working to get a bid out to, to get a cost on what it would cost to replace the windows.
You know, and I think a lot of that was, that was sort of the thing, was everything to be wood and natural and 25 years down the road, we're finding out that wasn't the best route to go.
He, uh, he's at the, the baseball team's playing in their district tournaments, so he's, he's with them.
Okay, anything else? Gentlemen, you're a player.
The same in our lead, actually.
We need to go into a.
We'll need to move into a compensation.
And then here's your statement, Lieutenant.
Well, and I'd just like to say real quick, um, Tina, Michelle, y'all worked hard on this. You know, this budget and taking care of our staff has been something that has been extremely important to me. I know I've been a tear and you're going to be all nuts, but, um, I think you all have given us a really, really good budget and I do think this will be a transformative year for the school system as far as the staff, as far as retaining and recruiting. I'm very, very hopeful after sitting there looking at this lot now and just seeing everything here laid out and bullet points, I think this can, this can really turn a corner for us. I hope.
Thank you.
So thank you all for that.
Okay, gentlemen, this, I need a motion to approve the school budget to include all budgets, general purpose schooling, federal projects, central cafeteria, Head Start, and to authorize Dr. Simcox, Ms. Littford to add local revenue estimates, reserves, fund balance, final BEP estimate and pre-K amounts when they become available.
So moved.
Second.
We have that motion, count to seven. Any further discussion? Call the rule.
I hope the county budget's this easy.
Mr. Grazer?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Robins?
Yes.
Thank you, and I know our staff is very appreciative.
What date did we come to decide on?
The second.
June second.
June second.
June second, we'll be at 5:15 and this room will be the evening, the school system will present their budget to the Budget Committee.
Okay. Good crap.
He's thinking, I got something, I got something.
It's a Monday. They're all Mondays.
Okay.
And I'll put that in, I'll, I'll send y'all several reminders.
Okay.
But really, and then how that works Chad, uh, since this is your first one, we just present our little cheat sheet that we call it and they usually, they have the questions we answer them. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Then they took over, they took over the room we sit in the audience.
Yeah.
They sit there.
Yeah.
And ask your questions.
If they have any.
Basically, these two ask your questions.
Yeah.
Cause then I keep my mouth closed. We should have.
I'm number two. Discussion table proposed new board meeting. I'm going to go back to the way we were.
When I proposed that, the entire idea was to try and give everybody more time if they wanted to to ask any questions. Um, I'm wired a little bit differently, so by the time I get in here, I've already festered y'all to that for questions as far as what's going to be there. So I'm ready to roll when I get here. Um, I do find that we really, we're just pretty much having fifteen to twenty minutes worth of discussion. And we've got a big gap in between that and the board meeting. So I had no issues with moving it back to its normal time.
Okay.
Unless somebody disagrees.
And just having, just having board meetings.
Yeah.
Just have a board meeting and a work session if needed.
If needed.
We'll call a work session if needed.
And I mean, if that means we have a two-hour board meeting, we have a two-hour board meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't really, I mean, we know what's coming up. Times past, we, we called a work, a work session. Sometimes it was quarterly, sometimes it was monthly, or uh, sometimes it got to be monthly, but sometimes we didn't.
Yeah.
You know, unless it was something to discuss, but.
I do think if we can continue to keep in the agendas as far as the month in advance heads up on what's coming up.
Yes.
Because like in my case, that gives me the opportunity to go ahead and educate myself prior to that.
Well, that's, that's.
That's a little bit of extra time. So I still think that's a really good idea.
Basically, our job, yeah.
Yeah.
What we're supposed to do.
Yeah, that's what, we actually have been working on that today.
So I guess since we voted on moving it before, we need to vote on moving it back. So, need a motion.
I like that motion.
In a second.
Got a motion in a second to move it back to the original time, which is at six. On a second. Any further discussion? Call the rule, please.
Mr. Graver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yes.
And just a reminder, the next week's board meeting will be at Doe Elementary. Doe's going to host us at six o'clock and we will be in the gym.
So that's, you know, supper. Let's see everybody out. I guess we're adjourned. If I got a motion. Got a motion in a second. Second.
Now, I will ask Kirby that question.